Good afternoon and welcome to the September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Mobile Planning Commission meeting. I would like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. This meeting is divided into two sessions, public hearing and deliberation. In public hearing, the agenda item is called, the applicant makes their presentation, commission members ask questions, and then the members of the public can make their comments to the commission. Only four people speak for an agenda item, four people against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes with question, subject to questions by the commissioners. At one minute remaining, you will have a warning bell or a beep prompting you to summarize your comments. After opposition speakers speak on an agenda item, the applicant is allowed a two-minute rebuttal. If you do intend to speak, please come down to the bottom of the stairs at the podium, speak clearly into the microphone and give your name and address for the record. Please direct all your comments to the commission only and not to the applicant, the staff, or the audience. After hearing all the applications, we will then go into deliberation, where we will discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. Commissioners then vote on each application and the results of that can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise during deliberation that were not addressed in the public hearing, we have the discretion to allow additional comments to resolve the issues or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, we will have commissioners recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. That doesn't mean that they are directly involved with the application or the applicant, but depending on circumstances, ethical rules may require the recusal. If they do recuse, we will have a supernumerary vote in their stead. Reminder that the Planning Commission makes final decisions on subdivisions with appeals of these decisions to the Circuit Court. The Planning Commission is strictly a recommending body for rezonings, conditional use permits, and planned developments. The city council makes the final decision on these applications and all appeals of the city council decisions are to the Circuit Court. This time, please do me a favor and turn your cell phones or other devices to vibrate or silence. Commissioners and staff, a reminder to please move towards the microphone and speak clearly when you do speak. I'll call the role of myself, Jay Stubbs, present, Mr. Kirk Matei, Ms. Jennifer Denson, Mr. Harry Brislin, Mr. Larry Dorsey, Mr. Chad Anderson, Mr. Matt Anderson, Mr. Nick Amberger, Mr. Josh Woods, Mr. Kenny Nichols, Ms. Ellie Edwards. We do have a quorum for the agenda items today. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor, the agenda passes for today. Holdover is number one on the agenda. This is a holdover from six hundred, seven hundred, and eight hundred. We do have West I sixty-five Service Road South. We do have a recusal in Mr. Kenny Nichols. We still maintain a quorum for this agenda item. This is a major modification of a previously approved PUD allowing shared access and parking between three building sites to allow construction of a multifamily development with two hundred and forty units in multiple buildings across the three building sites with shared access and parking. The applicant, go ahead, Mr. Watkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. Jay Watkins with Maynard Nexon, eleven North Water Street, suite twenty-four-two ninety-three six six oh two. This application was held over from the last meeting. The site plan and the staff comments were pretty extensive. And so we went back and you'll note that there's a fairly wholesale change to the site plan. They've reduced the number of units from two forty down to two seventeen. What this is, it's three separate lots of record. The property is located in northwest quadrant of Airport Boulevard and I sixty-five. Currently has a Best Western Plus Hotel on the northernmost lot. And then the middle lot and the southern lot have a Days Inn Super Eight. The hotel on the back portion of the lot has been boarded up and vacant for a number of years. The hotel that's operating on the central, center lot is an older style hotel. It's got doors that open up onto the parking lot, two stories. It is certainly aged out and it's in a position where renovating it is becoming economically unfeasible. So the applicant is proposing to demo the hotels on lot, the two, the center lot and the southern lot, and go back in with the two hundred and fourteen, two hundred and seventeen room apartment complex. I'd point out that this site is in a priority investment area under the map for Mobile. It is in a B three zone. And we have reviewed the staff recommendations and reports and are comfortable with everything there, subject to a couple of items. First, the landscape plan that was submitted is a little short in terms of frontage landscape. Because this is a major modification of a PUD, you do have the authority to allow the landscape plan as submitted. We would point out that this is kind of an awkwardly shaped lot. There's only so much frontage with respect to the central lot and the back lot is not having any frontage. And so we would argue or ask the commission to consider allowing the site plan, the landscape plan that was submitted to stand as the landscape plan for this PUD modification. We would ask that the applicant have the latitude to swap out what is referenced on the site plan as a pet park. When we went to the Board of Adjustment for our density variance, the chairman pointed out that with a site this size, with this number of units, it would be nice to have a playground for children as maybe as opposed to the pet park. And so we would like that flexibility to be able to use that as either a pet park or a playground for residents. I believe that's all we have. We're comfortable with all the other staff recommendations and are happy to answer any questions.
Four point of consideration for the commissioners, there are potentially eight findings of fact for this major modification, sixteen conditions. Mr. Watkins, I'm reviewing the conditions specific to your comments on landscape design and also pet park. I don't see either any of those other than regular notations, and I may get clarification from staff on that. Is there any specific findings of fact to the pet park?
There is not anything specific. We, because this is site plan specific, I don't know if that's a required finding or a required comment in the approval. We just wanted to be safe and make sure that we had brought that to everyone's attention. The landscaping comments are in the body of the staff report and just point out that it is an opportunity for the commission to adapt, adopt the site plan, I'm sorry, the landscape plan that was submitted. And so we would certainly like to be able to go with what's been submitted by our landscape engineer at this point.
So finding a fact D point one is where I'm finding that on the landscape. Am I correct on that, staff?
Number nine on the conditions.
Yeah, I was in findings of fact and then number nine on the conditions. All right. Any questions or comments from commissioners, from Mr. Watkins regarding this application for major modification and the comments that he brought up today? Speak clearly into your microphone.
Mr. Matei, can you kind of give me a little heads up on what paragraph you're in?
Question was about the comment from fire. Revised for September eighteenth meeting, the president does not meet adoption of fire access. The possible emergency access only drive will be required. Is that?
Fire is not here to discuss that this afternoon, and that would be a requirement under their ordinance, not the unified development code.
And I believe in a prior, the prior site plan, there was reference made to a gate on the rear of the southernmost lot. But kind of pursuant to staff recommendations, we would have to be in compliance with that. And we would certainly comply with whatever the fire department's requirements would be. And if they require an additional emergency access point, we would work with staff to modify site plan to that extent.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I think that's, I think from what I know or understand, I think of this size, I think it requires two access points to meet fire codes. So I think just to make a note that there's only one point of access. And then on, then to your point too, that I think, I guess in the original plan possibly was there a secondary access or just gated with like a Knox box? And that's been removed from the plan that's in front of us, I guess.
Looks like it has and it probably needs to be reinserted.
And then I'm assuming, I'm not going to assume anything. Alright, thanks.
I would ask staff, and this may be a fire question, but given the PUD nature of this application and the shared access with the northernmost lot, does that, I guess the two access points we've got, this is probably a fire question, but the two access points that are there, does that not satisfy the requirement of additional access?
That would definitely be a fire code question.
Any further questions, comments from commissioners? Alright, I'll now ask if there's anyone in the audience who is here to ask questions, speak for or speak against. Agenda item number one, which is a modification at six hundred, seven hundred, and eight hundred West I sixty-five Service Road South. Alright, seeing none, we'll move on and welcome back our recused member. You're not recused anymore. Number two, again, a holdover. This is, was a dual application at seventy-two eleven and seventy-two twenty-one Cottage Hill Road, starlight at Cottage Hill subdivision. For the subdivision application, there were seven findings of fact and then the rezone. I'll ask staff, we need to make any adjustments to this agenda item? Or if the applicant's present wanted to make any comments towards this agenda item? Hold on, pull your microphone down a little bit and then speak your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Shabir Hussain, one four four two West I sixty-five Service Road South, Mobile, Alabama, three six six nine three. The subdivision application, the comments from the last meeting, we're still working on getting those addressed. I spoke to Mr. Logan, so I think we would like to withdraw the subdivision application and resubmit that. But the zoning, I think there was no comments on the zoning application.
Alright, so as I understand it, still working on the details of the subdivision app. Staff is okay with withdrawal of that and resubmission at some point in the future. Got a nod of the head from staff and we'd like to continue on with the potential of the rezone, which would be going from R one residential suburban R one to multifamily residential suburban R three. Again, this is at Cottage Hill Road. And a reminder for commissioners, there are potentially seven findings of fact and a condition listed. Any questions or comments from commissioners for the applicant?
I have a question for the applicant. Mr. Hussain, looking at your site plan here, I think you're proposing a total of sixteen units. Is that correct?
Yes.
Obviously, I understand the need for the rezoning to R three to get duplex units, or I guess these are duplex units, correct?
Correct.
Staff, I guess by right, the duplex units could also be constructed in R two?
That's correct. R two is a two-family residential district.
Correct. I guess in looking at this, my only concern, just being a small site and the neighborhood meeting document showing the site plan with sixteen units, if there's just a blanket rezoning to R three by right, then if this is, I guess, three acres more or less, then I believe, you know, upwards of seventy-five units total could be constructed on the site. So I guess my question is, are you open to any voluntary density restriction as part of the rezoning?
Sure.
Should be okay with the, an approval with say sixteen units total?
So you're saying get rid of two more?
You have two or I think you have sixteen total, correct? I'm just, I'm asking the question, just as, as part of the rezoning, would you be willing to accept the rezoning contingent on a voluntary density restriction?
Are you specifically saying not to go over a certain amount?
Correct.
And that amount is?
Well, I guess based on the site plan.
Sixteen. So do you understand the question, Mr. Hussain?
Yes. Do we have to?
Well, it's up to the commissioner. So, so what you've got, you're applying from R one to R three. R three gives you much more latitude and any future owners much more latitude, whereas what you're building falls under R two. To get R three for consideration, you would be willing to say, we're not going to go anything over sixteen units today on this project or any future projects or any future owners, unless they come back before the commission. Doug, did I explain that correctly?
I don't know what the staff report said. I think Kenny just mentioned that under R three, he could have.
You have twenty-five units per acre now, obviously it's subject to, you know.
The commission is trying to ensure that you don't get disapproved for R three and then come in with a different site plan and have a hundred and fifty apartments.
So why don't we just do?
Keeping the neighborhood in our back of our mind.
Sure, I think we can. If anything changes, we will have to just come back and do a new application, correct?
Yes, sir.
That'll be fine.
Wait, Mr. Chairman, why, so why wouldn't we just do R two? Why, because, I mean, doesn't that make a future land use question for adjacent parcels? They say, well, look, I'm next to an R three. So then, next thing you know, you're proliferating R threes across that side of the street. If you just do R two, if that allows the same use anyway, why would you go for a more permissive?
Yeah, you beat me, you beat me to it, Mr. Anderson. My next question was, what is your justification for applying for R three?
We would, in the future, maybe to, one of the units, I want to do my office. So for that, if we do, then we'll have to change the zoning. I think I spoke to the zoning department and they said I couldn't have, and one of the units, I couldn't use it as an office. So for that, if I do decide to use it as an office, I think I'll have to do a new application, which would have to be B two or B three.
And when you say office, you're referencing properly licensed, business license. It's an office on property, one of the units of the sixteen. So that falls under mixed density as opposed to low density, I guess, staff?
So there's a little confusion with what is being presented versus what is being described. The applicant, Mr. Hussain, had provided us an application for R three to allow multifamily residential use of the property. That's three or more units, because if you were to rezone to R two, that one lot would be limited to one duplex. So to have sixteen dwelling units on this property, each duplex would have to be subdivided out as its own lot. In conversations with Mr. Hussain, the intent over the long term is potentially to redevelop this as a mixed-use property to include office uses as well as multifamily residential uses. Because the application is for an R three, the only thing we can consider at this time is the R three request. We have advised Mr. Hussain that he can move forward with this request. And if at a future date, he would like to try to rezone to allow the mixed use, he definitely could do that. But that would be a completely different conversation at that time. Right now, he's limited to the R three, which would limit use of the property to multifamily residential. And if that's not as clear as mud, the accessory use of an office on this property would be limited to its context within the multifamily development. So like a leasing office or anything related to the actual development, that's where the office use would be limited.
And if part of it was used as an office, would that create a different ratio for parking spaces?
It would. That office space is based off of a different parking requirement ratio than a multifamily development. It's one per four hundred gross, square feet of gross floor area. So that entire unit would be counted for its own parking requirements. And then it would be one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit would be counted for all of those multifamily residential development, excuse me, multifamily residential units. As far as density is concerned, the density in an R three pertains only to dwelling units, not any other type of use. However, it is limited by site coverage. So if the site meets its site or a density requirement, but those buildings, when we calculate all of them together square footage wise, exceed the site coverage limitations, then they would have to redesign it to meet those dimensional requirements.
And I guess my follow-up comment to your question, Mr. Anderson, was, you know, the R three, or kind of the reason I asked the question is, you know, the R three would allow the applicant flexibility rather than to do duplexes, to do, you know, six or, you know, eight units per building, which, you know, could allow him some latitude in developing the site, but still protecting the overall density that gets developed.
Mr. Anderson, questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking to Doug. Mr. Matt Anderson.
Mr. Matt Anderson.
I mean, yeah, I mean, my thinking is, it's, it's just rather than attributing B three to this and then putting a restriction that lasts for how long, Doug? How long would that restriction last? I mean. It would last, if, if we created, if we created a restriction, a density restriction, would, that would be just run with it for future owners and everything, right? So instead of creating a permanent fixture that's going to hobble the use of the land, it makes more sense to me to just do R two. We're already delaying the subdivision anyway, so they can just subdivide the property to, to be useful for the, you know, these duplex purposes. Or am I totally, am I totally in left field? Stephen's like, yeah, you're in left field. I think you're, you're constraining the developer about making him subdivide every single lot when he wants to do a mixed use development. When he wants to put densities, but again, that's the planning commissions. Well, it's, it's that or we constrain the land to being eighteen, eighteen units. Correct? Forever. Or you can just go through as an R three and call it. Or we could just do an R three and let it go.
So if it was to go to an R two, though, it would be at least nine lots, even what you're saying is each one of those little duplexes has to be a lot of its own?
That's correct.
And then probably a common area.
Not the specific units, but the, the structure with two dwelling.
Right, right. So there's one, two, three.
And then a lot of dimensions.
Eight different structures, eight different structures outside. So there'd be at least eight parcels plus any parcel that reference the road. He ends up getting a stack of tax bills that high for it. I think that's probably why you were saying, could he do a use restriction with an R three? Maybe it's an R three, but.
Well, the other thing is if, if he wants to, you know, instead of doing duplexes, you know, for cost reasons or other things that may be beneficial, do six units in a building, which, you know, is allowed, you know, by right under R three, but not exceed the overall number of units as he's currently proposed. So still giving some flexibility, yet trying to, you know, cap the allowable density.
Yeah, it seems that the R three ultimately gives you way too much flexibility, you know, from where the commission's perspectives are. But you just don't, I don't think, I sense there's not a problem with how you have it laid out with those number of units. But to get those number of units without a whole bunch of lots, you've got to go to an R three, which opens up something carte blanche for you to do way more than probably the commission would be, would be comfortable with. So I think it comes back to use restrictions and R three is probably the path forward if you chose to want to go that path.
I think R three with restrictions would make more sense. Then you won't have the extra cost of subdividing each unit some R two. So I think R three would be what we would request.
As it stands on the application. Any further questions or comments from commissioners? Alright, I'll ask it this time if there's anyone in the audience that has questions towards, wants to speak for, or wants to speak against this application, number two at seventy-two eleven, seventy-two twenty-one Cottage Hill Road. Again, the subdivision has been withdrawn and this would be specific to the rezone only, if there's questions concerning it. Alright, seeing none, we'll move on. The next two items on the agenda are both extension requests. Number three is a subdivision extension request at twenty-three oh one McFarland Road, the Angel Brook subdivision. It's an extension of a previously approved hundred and eight lot subdivision, just under forty acres. Is the applicant present? Are you present? Do you have any questions or comments that you'd like to bring up? Okay. Are you, just an understanding from you while you're up there, sir, that this extension request, should it be recognized and approved, would be for one year only?
Yes, that's fine. We, we are a hundred percent complete with construction and in the process of getting the final plat signed and reported now. So everything should be wrapped up in a matter of weeks.
Alright, while I have you here, there are eight listed conditions. You had a chance to read through those and you're in agreement with those conditions? Alright, thank you, sir. It's on the agenda. If anybody has any questions, speak for or speak against this extension application request at twenty-three oh one McFarland Road. Show me a hand. Alright, seeing none. Number four, same thing, twenty-three oh one McFarland. This is the extension of approval of a forty-eight lot subdivision just at under three and a third acre. It has sixteen conditions listed and again, reminder that it would only be good for one year. Any questions or comments towards those sixteen conditions on that application on the phase two? No, a shake of no of the head. Any one in the audience for or against or has questions towards this application on phase two at McFarland Road? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on. Number five on the agenda. This is a new application, subdivision application at thirty-five twenty Spanish Alley, the Sunset Creek subdivision. It's a re-subdivision of lots one through three at seven and a half acres. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant, applicant is present, are you in agreement with the ten listed conditions? We've got a thumbs up on the ten listed conditions. Any questions or comments from commissioners on this subdivision, Spanish Alley? I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that has questions towards, would like to speak for, or would like to speak against this application at thirty-five twenty Spanish Alley. Seeing none, we will move on. Number six, we have recusal on number six. Mr. Matei is recused. We still maintain a quorum for this agenda item. This is a subdivision at the south side of Wood Alley, eighty feet plus or minus west of Green Street. The re-subdivision of lots one through three, block nine, property of Woods at Allat Plateau, Alabama. It's a two lots at a quarter acre. Is the applicant present? Yes, ma'am. There are eight listed conditions. Just make sure you're in agreement with those and we'll take any questions or comments from you as applicant.
Hi, Carrie Comanus here, one fifty Government Street. We would like a waiver of the first condition, which asks for a pretty substantial set aside to create a sixty-foot wide street at this location. The street is currently sixteen feet. I, I think we would agree to something to making it thirty foot if, at some point in the future, there is a desire to widen the street. Otherwise, we'd like just a complete waiver.
So my condition reads revision of the plat to illustrate dedication sufficient to provide thirty.
Well, that's thirty feet from the center line.
Center line of Wood Alley unless waived. I'll have to defer to staff. I'm not familiar with this neighborhood at all. And see if you have any questions or comments, and then I'll ask Mr. Amberger for his comments. Looks like we're surrounded by.
Recently, there was a subdivision with a similar request off of Edwards Avenue that the Planning Commission did waive.
The Planning Commission did?
Yes, sir.
Alright, same neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
Many of the streets are, are near in this location.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the map. Yeah, I'm just looking at the map and everything looks tight and, and compact.
And, and we said GIS shows that as a thirty-foot right of way right now?
No, right now it's sixteen, sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet right of way. Goodness gracious.
That's one-six or six-zero?
One-six.
Okay.
Oh, it's an, it's an alley, not a street.
Yeah, so, so Nick and Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with the area. I've spent a good bit of time up there. It is literally an alley.
It, it may be called an alley. Originally, it was called a lane. I mean, it, it, it was a street, it is a street for all intents and purposes.
Yeah, compared to the streets around it, it is an alley. It's very narrow.
All right, any further questions or comments from commissioners?
Yeah, so Nick, would it be appropriate to say, um, to, I mean, in order to provide, you know, emergency access and things like that, what is the width we really would need there? Would it be, would you want twenty feet or would you do fifteen from the center line or what?
I mean, generally you'd have twenty feet for, for two-way traffic, but I don't think that the road, looking at, I don't think the road's twenty feet wide to start with. So it's probably, I don't know, is it, is it, is it, uh, marked one-way by chance?
It's not.
Okay, so I mean, it's just, I mean, I think it's just what it is. It's just an alley that's a remnant of where, I don't, I don't know that there's anything else that would, it's not like we're going to go down there and widen the street or they're going to widen the street. There's really nothing more is going to come of it, I don't think. And it's not that far from either, the other adjacent streets, so I, I would be inclined to, um.
I think we'd be happy with a waiver.
I, I think we'd be inclined to, I mean, I'd be inclined to support, you know, waiving that note one and really just nothing else, because I don't know what else could be done. I mean, even the houses on either side of it, uh, you know, they would probably be within the thirty feet, they'd probably be within twenty feet, so, um, and you've got a reduced front setback, uh, uh, condition that's added, so.
We're, I mean, the setback, I realize the setback is really five feet back, but to be honest, what we are going to do is line up with the adjacent houses, which is going to put us about twenty feet off the street already.
That, that would seem appropriate with the houses in that, in that block, so I can't see any.
Any further questions or comments from commissioners? All right, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that has questions towards, would like to speak for or against the application for subdivision at the south side of Wood Alley, west of Green Street. All right, seeing none, we will move on to seventh and final agenda item. We will maintain recusal of Mr. Matei and we still maintain a quorum for this agenda item. It's a subdivision at six fifty-five Congress Street and two sixty North Washington Avenue, the Tamerlin Park at downtown north subdivision. This is a subdivision of five lots, uh, right at point three-nine acres. Is the applicant present? Applicant is present with a show of hand. Are you in agreement with the eleven listed conditions?
Yes.
Got a yes from, yes, sir, and, uh, we got that confirmed. I'll ask if there's any questions or comments from commissioners on this subdivision. And seeing none, I will now ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to have questions towards, speak for or speak against this application at Congress Street and North Washington Avenue. No one? All right. That concludes the agenda and the public hearing session. We will welcome back Mr. Matei. We will send away Mr. Nichols. Send him away. We still maintain a quorum. This is number one for deliberation modification. Six hundred, seven hundred, and eight hundred west I sixty-five Service Road South. Mr. Watkins was present, did address the reasoning for the modification and brought up the specific notations for, uh, I believe, access, landscaping and pet park slash children's park. Entertain a motion.
Does, does it really require anything from us with regard to the pet park? I mean, that's, that's something that staff can approve.
Right, this is not pertaining to the use of the property. This is pertaining to the layout of the property.
And then with regard to landscaping, um, that, a lot of that's submitted at the time of permitting, isn't it? So is that, does that really require anything?
Um, with the reduction in the frontage landscape area from the required twenty-five thousand plus to five thousand, um, the planning commission can approve that under the PUD modification. And it would require your approval for them to move forward and during the permitting process for us to approve that landscape plan.
Hmm, okay.
So we're looking at number nine on the conditions list, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I think it would be, we'd either have to eliminate number nine or add something to it saying the amount. I mean, what's preferable for the staff?
Let me double check real quick. So eight and nine would be, um, affected by that decision if it were to be approved. Um, if approved, uh, number eight would most likely need to be revised to reflect the reduction in the front landscape area, um, and number nine would need to be removed.
And you said twenty-five to five?
Approximately.
Twenty-five thousand to five, approximately. All right, entertain a motion. Anybody got that?
Yeah, I'll try. Okay, so move to approve subject staff recommendations with findings of fact, A through H. Uh, removing, um, condition number nine and amending condition number eight to reflect a change from twenty-five thousand square feet to five thousand square feet in regard to landscape square footage. Is that close enough?
We can make the specific adjustments.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion among commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The application for the modification passes. We can welcome back Mr. Nichols. We're on agenda item number two. Again, the subdivision application is being withdrawn. We'll see that at a future date. And then consideration for the rezone from R one to R three as applied with multiple discussions on that. A reminder that there are potentially seven findings of fact for the rezone.
I would move to approve subject findings of fact, uh, subject staff recommendations of the findings of fact, A through G.
With no restrictions on units?
We have a motion.
What was it? Mr. Anderson, what was your?
As applied.
Do you have a restriction?
No, as applied.
I'll second that.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion among commissioners? All right, call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We have two, two nays?
Nay.
All right, so the, the, so two, two not for, or for, uh, against, I should say, and then, uh, the remainder four, so then.
Need a point of order. We have a full slate, so the supernumeraries votes don't count. We don't need them on this.
All right, so.
We need them when, when Kirk and Kenny recuse themselves. But for this, Kenny and Ellie do not vote.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. So the motion passes. Number three on the agenda item. Extension request, twenty-three oh one McFarland Road. The applicant is present. The applicant is in agreement with the eight listed conditions and understanding of a one-year extension timeframe. I'll, uh, I'll move to approve for the extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number four. Twenty-three oh one McFarland Road, phase two, Angel Brook subdivision, sixteen listed conditions.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved for extension, both of those items. Number five, thirty-five twenty Spanish Alley, Sunset Creek subdivision, re-subdivision of lots one through three at seven and a half acres. The applicant is present with a show of hand. Also gave a, uh, indication of agreement to the ten listed conditions. Entertain a motion for subdivision approval.
So moved.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for subdivision passes. Number six, we'll recuse Mr. Matei. Subdivision, south side of Wood Alley and Green Street. The applicant is present. Agreed to the eight listed conditions and requested removal of condition number one. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve subject staff recommendation, waiving condition number one.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion for subdivision passes. Number seven, on the agenda item, we'll maintain recusal for Mr. Matei. Sixty-five, six fifty-five Congress Street, two sixty North Washington. Tamerlin Park at downtown north subdivision. The applicant is present. Mr. Byrd agreed to the eleven listed conditions. Entertain a motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion for subdivision passes. At this time, that concludes the agenda items for today. We do have two items of other business. I'll take them in reverse order on your agenda, or your printed notes. This is the review of the minutes from the following planning commission meetings. We'll batch them for spring of twenty twenty-four, January eighteenth, February twenty-second, March twenty-first, and April eighteenth. Move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The planning review minutes pass for those dates. We will execute those documents shortly. The second item under other business is a call for a public hearing on October sixteenth next month, twenty twenty-five, to amend chapter sixty-four of the Unified Development Code, UDC, Appendix A, Downtown Development District. Purpose of the amendments to Appendix A is to reorganize the format, layout, and sequence of the development district regulations for clarity, process, and ease of use. I'll turn it over to staff for further commentary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll only take a few minutes of your time this afternoon to give you a high-level overview, uh, of the draft changes. And at the end, I'll, um, direct the commission as well as the public as to where they can go to find the actual amendments. Um, the Downtown Development District, or DDD, uh, as we refer to it, was originally adopted in twenty fourteen, um, with more than ten years under our belt. Um, based on input from our stakeholders, uh, staff was about, uh, asked to evaluate the DDD code. So over the past year, we've taken a closer look at the Downtown Development District to assess how effectively it supports our goals and how it, uh, easy it is for users to understand and conform to its requirements. Next, all right, nope, we're good. Um, so in the fall of twenty twenty-four, uh, the actual assessment began. Um, through consultation, uh, with consultants that, that the city has, uh, worked with, uh, over the years, Planning Next and Clarion and Associates, we initiated a comprehensive assessment of the code. Uh, in October of twenty twenty-four, we began, uh, extensive stakeholder engagement. Uh, we met with stakeholders, uh, toward the downtown, um, to give ourselves a better understanding of the real-world implementation challenges that the code may present. In March of, uh, this year, the assessment was, was completed. Um, and, uh, with that came recommendations, um, from our consultant, um, suggesting that we, um, work to reorganize and simplify, uh, the document. Um, so, next slide. The, the overall goal, uh, was to refine the language and structure of the code to be more user-friendly, um, without changing the meaning or intent of the regulations. Um, in this draft, you'll see that, um, we've introduced new graphics to illustrate how the sub-districts and frontage standards are applied. And we've, uh, worked hopefully to clean up, um, inconsistencies, resolve provisions that may have, um, any, uh, provisions that may have been unclear. So our, our first goal, uh, was to, uh, better, better organize the document for ease of use. So, um, nine articles, uh, have been grouped, um, together where there are similar provisions, um, with the hope of providing for a logical flow and better navigation from the, uh, end user as they are working to, uh, apply the codes to their project. So some of the, uh, key consolidations, uh, the, the zoning sub-district regulations are now in a single comprehensive section. Our frontage standards are unified into one section with consistent formatting and visuals. And our development standards, parking, landscaping, signage, fences, and walls are now easier to find and interpret. Next slide. So this just gives you, uh, a quick glance at the, the various sections, then, um, the nine articles and how they've been grouped together. Um, and the, the goal again would have been to establish a clearer, more logical and user-friendly structure. Next slide. Um, this is just an example of what you'll find in the new draft. Um, from feedback that we received from a consultation team that has a great deal of experience with, um, developing, uh, form-based codes across the country. They quickly highlighted that the current document was very, uh, text-heavy. And so the recommendation was to replace that text, that dense text with tables. So now the regulations are organized and clear tables that highlight those dimensional standards, um, transparency and frontage requirements. So key improvements, the, the sub-districts now follow the same organizational format used in the broader UDC. Um, when you have the opportunity to review the draft, you'll see that the template is very similar to the way that the Unified Development Code is laid out. The new tables of graphics consolidate and illustrate the, the standards that I described previously. And the requirements for modifications to existing buildings are placed, uh, in tables. We just here a few examples to illustrate, um, how that graphic representation, um, has been reformatted. We can go to the next slide. All right, and so finally, um, what we hope we've done is we've, uh, worked to additionally to streamline the administrative review process, um, with the goal of improving administrative efficiency, uh, by offering clearly defined development review steps in, in a sequence. Um, we've removed the CRC or Consolidated Review Committee. Um, now those, their responsibilities have not been eliminated, um, but essentially staff will take on the, um, responsibility as they have been to ensure compliance with the code as a project is presented for review. Um, secondly, we've, we hope that we've resolved common problem areas, um, addressing key ambiguities, ambiguities that have caused confusion in past reviews, um, updated the transparency requirements to comply with our building codes, and clarified the parking lot, in-lot screening standards. And just to wrap up, it's our goal that the DDD update, update makes the document clearer, more visual, and easier to navigate. These updates maintain the intent of the original regulations while improving functionality for users. Um, specifically those within the, um, development world, but, um, as well as staff in, in terms of how we are, um, applying those standards. And, um, as far as we will, as always, comply with our, um, required, uh, steps for advertising, um, but we will be sending out, uh, links to the full code. So, um, US Commission members, as well as the public, will have an opportunity to review it. It will be, um, updated on both the MapforMobile website as well as the BillMobile.org website. And, uh, it will take you to the document for review, but there will also be a public input portal where you can present, um, any comments that you may have, uh, with regard to what you're, um, what you've been previewing. Um, we're happy to answer any questions. This was intended to give you a very high-level, uh, overview of what you can expect to see within the document. Um, but, um, on the October sixteenth public hearing date, um, we will likely go into some more details and obviously take, um, feedback and comment, um, from the public at that time. And as is the case with all of our codes, uh, you will be providing us with a recommendation, but the final adoption process rests with the city council. So, that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Pico. Any questions, comments from commissioners?
Mr. Renfer, you got any feedback on this, behalf of the downtown group?
My feedback is that staff has been, uh, cooperative and collaborative in sharing their desired intent, and the intentions seem, um, manageable and, uh, up to snuff in best practices. So, thank you.
This isn't going to change anything. This is just changing the format? Because that thing is very confusing to me.
I, I would, I would say that, um, that we've made some tweaks where we found some incon- inconsistencies within the code, uh, but we have not made any what I would call significant changes. Um, to sum the, the, how we're dealing with the Consolidated Review, uh, committee is probably more of a, a substantive change. The review process doesn't go away, um, but we, we're, we're ba, basically taking how we are, um, implementing the CRC process now, um, and codifying that within the ordinance. Um, it's my hope that now that we have a reformatted, um, hopefully better structured document, um, moving forward, when there's the opportunity to get into those more significant, um, changes, that we'll have a better document in which to be able to identify where those changes should be made. Um, the, the, I guess the only, um, uh, concern that we've heard, uh, from the public and from users of the code, as well as internally from the staff, is that it is very text-heavy, and, um, that's why we were very intentional in working with our consultant team to provide tables, charts, graphs, and consolidate and organize things into the right section so that it could be much more user-friendly. So, like we always say, this is our, our first start, um, but I'm hopeful we have a better template, um, to work with. But we shied away from, um, making any, um, significant changes to take away from the meaning or intent of the, of the document itself, so...
Yeah, it makes it easier for, yeah.
And I will say, um, we have had, um, as indicated in the, uh, slides, um, numerous, um, stakeholder meetings, developers, contractors, architects. Um, we even had some neighborhood group, uh, representation, and the feedback that we received from them, that they really appreciated those graphics, um, to help articulate the ultimate goal of the document. Um, lots of words can distract, unfortunately.
All right, again, thank you, Ms. Biko. Uh, the chair moves for call to public hearing. Properly seconded. All in favor? Public hearing will be held on October sixteenth at the conclusion of the regular agenda items of our planning commission meeting. Any further business? All right, reminder, it's National Cheeseburger Day. Get your cheeseburger.